Okay, this is a question for all of you. So please keep your answer short, about two minutes each. The question is, what makes you any better than the others? And this is for all of you. Judith?
I'm sorry, repeat the question. I was, mic issues.
Okay, sorry. What makes you any better than the others?
I don't know that it's a competition of who's better than who. I already have the experience of being on the council and I know the inside and outsides of the networking that goes on throughout the city, as well as with the employees, the working with the employees and understanding the fine details of what goes on with managing the city. So I already have a leg up on that.
Okay, Mike?
That's a very subjective question. And I'm gonna just stick it with experience. I believe I'm, I have more experience than the other two candidates here. I'm the only one that's actually written law and not just voted for it. And I, besides actually writing law, I've run a hundred million dollar contract, you know, for inspection through New York City. All by myself, I had to run that, run that contract. I have experience beyond what the other two candidates has in actually running business and making law. Thank you.
That hundred million dollars is impressive. So that was my first contract with state overseas when I was doing Iraq. And we took that hundred million dollars, we took it to a hundred and thirty-five million dollars based on the performance that we were doing, which actually included the operational, administrative, budgetary, use and management of not only the United States but United Kingdom, Japanese, and Iraqi personnel. So a hundred million dollars is impressive. Then we did the same thing, managing that type of budget in Syria, creating something from ground. So the actual experience, I guess, is a little bit more, is broader in scope that I can actually identify when it comes to operational, budgetary, administrative, fiscal, it's all there. And it's been being done for the last, let's say I retired in ninety-four, but even that wasn't in the Navy, thirty some odd years. So some very simple, small businesses, which I've actually run, operated, to the point of running multi-million dollar Department of State, Department of Defense budgets, which, as Ellen, who's my DCMA, or Marcia will attest, becomes very complex in managing any type of DOD Department of State budget. So, that's my gig.
Okay, question number two. As the District Four representative, no other District Four rep ever did anything for their district. What do you specifically plan to do? Start with you, Mike.
Like I said before, I'm gonna make sure that anything that comes before that council is good for District Four. If it's bad for District Four, I'm not gonna vote for it. If it's neutral, if it doesn't do anything bad or it doesn't do anything, you know, anything good for District Four, but it's good for Groveland, I'll vote for it. But I'm gonna consider you first. And I'm gonna go through that city charter. And I'm gonna make sure that if there's something in that city charter that can be changed to benefit District Four, that that committee is gonna take up that item, that they're gonna discuss it, that they're gonna vote on it, that they're gonna change that item to the best of my ability to change that item to be beneficial to District Four.
Jim?
Do that again for me. Got a question. Thanks. This is working, this is awesome.
As the District Four representative, no other District Four rep ever did anything for their district, what do you specifically plan to do for District Four?
That's a really good observation, and I think you're about a hundred percent right, that no other District Four candidate has done much for our district. So, that, I will tell you this, and just like Mike, I think we both have a very similar outlook on this. However, I'm more of a sixty, forty, I'll be honest with you. Because there's nothing that can be decided as an isolation district. Because everything that goes on outside that wall and beyond the streets of Wilson Lake Parkway and up around twenty-seven, which incorporates District Four, everything that goes on out there impacts us inside of Trilogy. Taxes, our water availability, water pressure, everything impacts us in here. So in isolation's view of only what's good for District Four, we may not have that cooperative participation of a, of a council members, understanding that the only perspective we're interested in is how it impacts District Four. Because every one of those districts are also gonna be arguing for their own benefit. So there's going to have to be a way to compromise, accept differences of opinions, and empathize with everybody's desire to serve their constituents the best. So there's gonna have to be some quid pro quo. So specifically thinking about District Four, it's not either, not, either A, not realistic or won't be productive. We've got to work with those other four council members to come up with a solution that's in best interest of A, sixty percent Trilogy, District Four, and the rest of the city as well. I think I have that skill set to negotiate.
Love this question. So let's talk about what's gone on with District Four since I've been sitting on the council seat. But specifically, let me start with Trilogy. I sat on the council seat, and suddenly Hurricane Milton blows through, and we were devastated in here. Our trees were blown over, it was a hot mess. Ladies and gentlemen, within two weeks, maybe three, I had a meeting set up at this clubhouse with the important people, department heads from the city, to come out and meet with John Nichy, Ken Andrews, the gentleman that runs the Bright View Tree Division. We had a very lengthy meeting here. And the upshot of that meeting was those connections were made, and at that point I no longer had to participate, but I opened the doors for that meeting. And you know what's happened for Trilogy? Only eighty trees need to be replaced, not the hundred and twenty or however many were torn down. John and Ken continue to work with the city, and that's why it's been slow rolled and you haven't seen the cost come to us as citizens for the cost of those trees, because they continue to dialogue with the city on what tree they want to put in, whether they want to put in oak trees and ruin sidewalks again and go through all that nightmare, or something that may be a little different. It's about twenty-five acceptable trees that can go in, and they continue to go to the city and meet. So you're probably wondering why you haven't seen the trees move forward. We're pushing a year on that. It's saving you money in your pocket while they continue to determine what they're going to do. So, thanks to that. Now here's another interesting one. This is what I've done for Trilogy. I saved this community a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Driving down the road one day, and I see the fiber optic vehicle out there on Wilson Lake, I stopped and took a picture. And I'll tell you why I did it, because we had had a fiber optic company putting fiber optic in, in downtown Groveland, and they cut a water main, and they cut electric wires, and we're having a heyday, and they got a stop order from the city. I took the picture, I sent it to John Nichy, and I said, "Not for nothing, but they're putting fiber optic up here, and we had a work stoppage today in the city because somebody caused a problem downtown."
Okay, time.
Uh, anyway, as it is, they know who the fiber optic company is that cut our sprinkler systems, and it saved you a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Okay, question number three, and this is for all of you again. Will you get the district, will you get District Four its fair share of the city revenue? Because we contribute the most for the least return. It's time we receive something back for the millions we pay in. This is for all of you. Jim, start with you.
These are always interesting questions, because I'm, I need to have so much more information to be able to come up with a question that's even nearly relevant. And the reason for that is, is because I have no idea how much the person who wrote that question thinks in benefits we're getting back from the city of Groveland, to include police, fire, water, infrastructure support. So I'm not sure what the perception is of how much we could get back compared to how much is thought that we are actually paying in to determine if those numbers are even close, or how you would be able to justify that difference. So without having specific numbers, and you guys, a lot of you guys are data guys in here, it's kind of hard, we're not doing this because of this, without having the facts to connect the dots. So I respect the question, I just can't come up with an answer that would make sense without knowing what the fa, what the, what the numbers are.
Judith?
Can you repeat the question again? I'm not quite clear what the question is.
Will you get District Four its fair share of the city revenue?
I'm confused by what fair share of city revenue. I, I'm sorry, and I, I'm gonna kind of agree with Jim. It seems like a fairly vague question, I'm not sure what the, what the intent is.
Okay, I think the rest of the question will give a little bit of context to it. Because we contribute the most for the least return, it's time we receive something back for the millions we pay in. That's the perception.
The perception is, we give the most for the least return? I, I'm not sure who wrote that, I'd have to drill that down. You know, there's close to, I don't know the exact numbers, they don't pin me on the wall, close to four thousand homes in District Four, and more are coming. There's eleven hundred and forty-five homes in Trilogy. At one point Trilogy was probably the largest group of homes out here, but now it's being outweighed by houses across Wilson Lake, up twenty-seven, and so on. So I'm not sure that we really, at this point in Trilogy, are the, the, the cash cow. So to speak to that, we're being outnumbered daily by the houses going in. Didn't used to be that way, but it is now. So I don't know what return on investment you're looking for. Roads, Wilson Lake is managed by Lake County. So I'm not quite, the, the question just doesn't resonate well with me. Sorry whoever wrote it, but it just doesn't seem to resonate with me. And, thank you.
That question resonates with me. I know exactly what you're talking about. The only thing that comes out of our taxes is the police department. Everything else, we pay for directly. It's a, it's about time that the person from District Four stands up for Trilogy. And stop letting people tell people in Trilogy that we're old, we're stuck up, we're rich, we can afford to pay these taxes, we can afford to not get services from our government. You're asking for services, you're asking for what your government can do for you, and I'm there to listen. And I will help you, and I will get on that council if you vote for me, and I will do that for District Four. I understand that question perfectly. And people, the person who wrote that question understood it perfectly as well, too. Thank you.
Okay, Jim? Jim? Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Push the button.
And I was criticizing the EOD guy for not knowing which button to push. No, that's okay, I got it. Okay. Question number four, any ideas on what we're going to do with the extra property we have for sale? Mike, you start off.
The extra property?
Yeah, that's the Wilson Lake property.
Wilson Lake, across the street.
Uh, well, that, that is a Trilogy question, it's not really a city question, but I did propose to city to buy that land from us, and make it a preserve, or make it a park, instead of putting low density, you know, high density housing over there. I don't want townhouses over there, I don't want more people on this road. We don't have the traffic light yet. They're trying to put a, put a high school next to that new elementary school, there, that, you see the white signs up there? They want to change the zoning, they want to change the zoning so they can put it from residential to put in another charter school. They don't even know what the traffic's gonna be on that first charter school, and they want to put another one up there. I think they should wait until they find out how it's gonna work out.
Okay, Jim?
Really good and current question. Most of you have been paying attention, I think, to the HOA's presentations on the Wilson Lake property right across the street, and the plans for whether to sell it and the negotiations between inside Trilogy, whether to sell or not. Remember, you've got to get seven hundred and fifty-six positive votes for the Home Code Association to agree to sell it, number one. Okay, not just votes, seven hundred and fifty-six. But, back to the issues that do affect District Four. That is a PUD, Plan Unit Development, across the street, that's what it's zoned as. Senate Bill seventeen thirty was recently signed into law by the governor. That basically gives any developer that purchased that piece of property the right, without any type of city approval, review, to include permitting, to change it from an affordable housing development. There's no, that's the law. So if we do decide to sell it, and it's, say a church, they can turn half that land or wherever land is available into an affordable housing unit. A developer buys it, they can turn that into an apartment, affordable housing development unit, without our approval, denial, doesn't make any difference, they can do it. So what we're doing out, and this is back, gets back to the District Four, is we're gonna be working with the city, we're working with the county, supposed to be meeting with Commissioner of Parks sometime very soon, and to include Representative Yarkowski. Because inside that bill, SB forty, SB thirty, SB seventeen thirty, there is a Wakava carve-out, meaning the Wakava district is not impacted by that bill, which has some put on it. And there is areas outside of that immediate Wakava area that is still included into the Wakava management. There is an opportunity to re-engage the conversation with state and lawmakers, to give us, Lake County, and some of the other counties, the ability to negotiate carve-outs. Because that bill was written for Miami, Tampa, Jacksonville, Gainesville, the urban areas, to assist with LLA, Live Local Act, that provided urban ability for people who worked in that urban area to keep from the-
Let me clarify some misconceptions or misspeaking. Cherry Lake Preparatory Academy, which is opening on Monday, was interested in purchasing the piece of property next door, or a portion of it, but it was out of their budget. I currently have the plans for what's to be rezoned there. It's not approved, it's been talked about. It will of course be some rooftops, and it will be some residential, but it will not be a high school. So let me kind of calm your nerves on that. There is a meeting already with the city, I've been talking to John Nichy, and it's to do with the property across the street, but I don't feel that I'm at liberty to talk about that, because sometimes these things are a delicate negotiation. So I'm going to let that stay tabled. I think asking somebody on the city council about an HOA piece of property is probably a little misplaced. Yes, we know what's going on with it, yes, we know the talks. It's not sold, and until, it's, not even sold, we haven't even decided as a community what's gonna happen with it. So I think any conversation about that is a little premature. But I can, I can assure you that there is not a high school going in. The school does want to put in a high school. I hope somebody has asked a question about the traffic, because I got all the answers, but I've already used most of my two minutes, so I'm gonna hold that to be able to talk about that if a traffic question comes up, because I can hopefully make you feel comfortable about the traffic at the school when it opens on Monday.
This, uh, next question is for Judith, and it's a two-part question. Wilson Lake track, uh, traffic with charter school picking up kids, huge lines.
I didn't, who wrote that? I was timely.
Okay, and, um, I think this next question is related. Is a high school planned on Wilson Lake?
I just answered that question. At this point, no, and it won't be in that piece of property that's being rezoned. So there's not a whole lot of, a lot of other options here. I have no clue what's going on with the two lots as you get closer to twenty-seven. That's not even in discussion right now. So let's talk, talk traffic real quick. When Cherry Lake Prep started having their first information meetings, I didn't make the first one, I went to the second one, and at that point I introduced myself to the school, and the offici, I hate to say officials, but I say the school officials. And we started talking traffic, traffic on Wilson Lake Parkway. And very shortly thereafter, I had a meeting set up with the school, Chief Ramsey and Chief Carroll, and we talked about traffic issues. Let's talk about what's gonna go on Wilson Lake Parkway. Shortly after that, we had another big meeting, and we had Tim Maslow, TJ Fish, and everybody in the, in the city that would be involved in any aspect, parks that would be involved in the opening of the school. So let me tell you this, there are no school buses for that school, none. Forty percent, the last number I had, forty percent of the students attending that school live in the houses behind it, and they will walk and bike ride. The rest is parent drop-off in a three-lane oval to drop the students off. And now Cherry Lake has partnered with a company called, I think it's called Germantine, close enough, and it's, uh, it's a little independent pick-up and drop-off for parents. If you can't, you can hire them to pick up and drop off your kids, I don't know how many kids are on the bus, but for every parent that hires them, that's one less car coming in and out of the school. Now look, Monday it opens, so I'm gonna tell you, expect some traffic. I mean, come on, give it a week, let it calm down. Once the light gets in on Wilson Lake and twenty-seven, it should kind of help temper some of that. But it's gonna take, we will have a police presence on Monday, there will be, we have-
Time.
Okay, thank you. But thanks for asking that question.
Go ahead, and you can stay up, this next question's for you, too. Okay, what have you accomplished in your political career?
Well, I talked about the two wonderful opportunities that we put in place for Trilogy, saving you a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and I don't know what the final ticket will be on saving you the money on the trees, that's still an open end. Harvest Market up in, that little strip center up there, has already indicated that they want to be one of the first people to, to get involved in the retail that's coming in in this rezoning down here. Very long discussion with them this week. Now, that retail isn't gonna happen for a while, but they've already stuck their hand out and said, "We want to be there, we want to put our coffee shop there." So there's things, not just in District Four, but across the community, because no matter what, I represent every resident in Groveland. Every resident gets represented by Judy Fike. Trilogy gets represented, District Four gets represented. We have worked out a relationship with this school that's absolutely phenomenal. I'm going to be having a fire tax assessment huddle on the twenty-eighth, and we will be using the school for that, because we have that kind of relationship. And so some of it is kind of, you know, maybe not real visible to you, the things that go on, but a council member's fingers touch pretty much everything that goes on in Groveland. Yes, I'm in District Four, and I will continue to represent District Four, and I fight for District Four. We have the school, we have Cherry Lake Park, we got the best park in the city here. It's expanding, there are things coming with it. You pickleball folks will be thrilled, we got pickleball courts coming, we got a splash pad coming. But I'm fighting for retail here. So we don't have to drive all over Hell's Half Acre and into Claremont and take your money and put in another city's coffers. So I'm gonna tell you, support Lake Ridge Vet, support Harvest Market, those are District Four retailers. Harvest Market's expanding up there, there's other things coming, the owner of that shopping center is coming in in a few weeks, and we have a meeting scheduled with the city to talk about what else they're gonna expand into. And whatever expands there, ladies and gentlemen, is for you, for District Four, and for anybody in Groveland that wants to come up.
Time. This is a yes/no answer question for all three of you. Okay, so the other two of you. All right, would any of you support visitors' comments to be held at the beginning of the meetings?
I'm sorry, what was the question again?
Would any of you support visitors' comments to be held at the beginning of the meetings? I'm assuming meetings like, well, yeah.
Of sitting comments before the meeting.
Yeah, city council. Go ahead, Judith.
Well, if you're talking about when we start a city council meeting, and after we do the pledge and the invocation, comments, considering we haven't worked on the consent agenda, new business or old business, I'm not sure how those comments would play out. I think sometimes the discussion of what goes on with the council as we talk about those issues probably prompt better questions, but if you come in with a question, and you get up and you use your five minutes on a particular subject, and then you want to talk about it later, you may not get your five minutes on that particular subject. So I, I'm not so sure that's a great idea, I think it's putting the cart before the horse, to be quite honest.
Mike?
Simple question, simple answer, yes. If you go to the city council meeting and you have something that you want to say, you should be able to say it in the beginning of the city council meeting. Not have to wait until nine, nine-thirty, or it's not ten o'clock at night. The last city council meeting went past ten o'clock. So people didn't get to talk until after ten. Yes, you, the people, should come first. The business can always get done when the business needs to get done.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, thanks. I agree with Judy. The organization and structure of that meeting is such that, A, we gotta hear what the topics are, and there's a, there's an agenda item. You know, you have to go through our office rule of order and all that kind of stuff. But to provide a comment on a subject that has yet to been discussed by the city council, even voted upon, or comments made between the city council, you may be very redundant in your comments, because they've already entered agreeing with you. There may be something added during their content, or their comments amongst themselves to change that particular topic, or at least amend it in some way. So in understanding, you have to understand the agenda before you get out and talk about it. And that also gives everybody else a fair opportunity to do it, because if you line up up front, and everybody talks for two hours, you're not gonna get to the agenda items. So I agree with Judy on that, the structure is appropriate.
Okay, this next question is for Mike. Explain in layman terms the rezoning in Groveland. Rezoning.
Okay, well, um, let's see. Groveland has a strategic plan. And in that strategic plan, they call out for a total of seventy-five thousand people in Groveland. They, uh, they, they've allocated a, a portion of that already, but there's a portion out there that's still out there. There's a map on this, on the city page that sits there and shows you all the zoning and every place where they would like to develop. And that's most of the, the five thousand acres that are left open, most of that they want to develop. So they want to put seventy-five thousand people in, in, in this community, and I don't believe that the people moved here to get seventy-five thousand people. When, when I moved here, there was, there was twenty thousand people. Another five thousand people have moved in in the three years that I've been here. I don't really think that we want seventy-five thousand people in this neighborhood. The roads can't handle it, the infrastructure can't handle it, there is, there's not enough, you know, basics here for us. The hospital is way away from us, we have an emergency room, but it's way up near the Turnpike. We don't have any type of medical facilities close by us, and they could use that land for that, instead of high-density housing. It was mentioned that we need commercial. Commercial drives a city, residential doesn't. Commercials pay much higher taxes than, than residential units, we want commercials. We want a supermarket right up on that corner, they put a light there, we want a supermarket there. We don't want another housing development, we want revenue. Because we're tired of paying all the revenue to the city. We want the city to find revenue. Thank you.
And next question's for Judith. Can you explain the prefix "re" in front of "elect" on your campaign signs? Do you think that is deceiving?
This is one of my favorite questions. I can't tell you how often I get asked that. First off, yes, I was appointed to the council, but my seat on the council has just as much value, it's no different than being elected. Because I'm the incumbent, and I sit in that seat, I have to run for reelection. It's campaign language. Get your folk, get your phones out, folks, and Google it. I don't have to sit here and talk for two minutes on it. It's campaign language, it's what I have to use, and I'm the incumbent, so I have to run for reelection, because I can't run for reappointment. I've messaged that on my Facebook page, I've been asked by people time and time again, I've been told it's illegal to put that on my sign, ladies and gentlemen, if it was illegal to be put on my sign, my signs would be down, and that would be the end of it. Thank you for that question.
Okay, this next question is for all three of you. Are you aware that the proposed fire rescue assessment letter shows more than fifty percent, or, sorry, twenty percent increase, and it's supposed to be no more than five percent? Jim, start with you.
No.
Okay, so you're not aware.
No, I wasn't aware of those percentages, um, and I don't know the rationale behind it. No, I wasn't aware of those percentages, and I don't know the rationale behind it. So, we are having a meeting, as I understand, on September 2nd to discuss that. First thing, and I will, that is not a bill that you received, that's a letter of intent, basically, for the fire assessment to be imposed on the House, and you saw the structure, she saw the fees on the back, for $24.99 and less, it's $384, something like that, and then it goes up in other depths areas. So, these specific type of questions are awesome, because it gets me back into education a portion of finding out the details about it, but it does not relieve everybody in here from going to the September 2nd meeting and asking that specific question at the city council meeting for a specific understanding. That was a letter of intent, just like you get a tax bill, says your taxes may go up, this is not a bill on it. Okay, so my suggestion is, you can follow up with me to find out if I learned anything in a week or two, but make sure you go to that September 2nd, and also go on the website to find out what the details of that assessment and actually, actually mean, okay?
Thank you. As I said, on the 28th, I think we will have the local huddle over at Cherry Lake Prep. This is the fire assessment report that was provided to every council member as we met with Chief Carroll and those involved in this, including the members of the assessment team. The reason that letter was sent out, ladies and gentlemen, is it was such a debacle with the water bill, with a postage stamp size notice on your water bill that you were getting a 40% increase. You all know the hue and cry that went up in October. So the city, trying to be more forward-facing about the fire assessment, had these letters drawn up. Everything on there has been vetted time and time and time again by a legal team to get the right verbiage on there. Now what happened is 62 letters went out saying, "You've got two dwelling units." Now I have offended many of those phone calls, but most of the people that have called me and that have spoken to me about it, I can look in my report, and I can look at your square footage and tell you exactly what your increase is. I believe my husband and I are probably looking at about a $75 increase, less than $10 a month. But when you look at it, the way it's written, and with ours, I think it said $373 or something, I've got my letter over here, it makes it sound like you're getting a $373 tax increase, you are not. There will be a meeting on the 28th at Cherry Lake Prepatory, I would suggest, since it's so close to every one of us here, come on by. And then again, show up at the Purrier Building on the 2nd of September and get even more information. An informed citizen is a great citizen. We're getting this information out, we're pushing it out, so let me give you a little piece of information right now, so in October, you're not yelling at the city again, though you probably will yell at us, there is a 10% increase in water coming in in October.
Time.
Forward-facing, 10% in October, please be prepared.
As the District Four representative, I would think that the person would go and ask the chairman of that committee what this was all about. I did, his name is Dr. Brandon Dixon. And basically, with the water bill, if you notice, that's outside of the tax bill. It's not in your normal tax bill, it's outside of the tax bill. Now, the reason why the fire department got put outside of the tax bill is that Kroger, Amazon have caps on the fire assessments, they can't be raised. But with this program that they put out where they move the fire assessment outside of the normal tax bill, now they can pay their fair share. There's no longer a cap, they are going to get increases so they can pay for that firehouse, so they can pay for that fire truck. The District Four representative should have known that, they should have told you that, because you want to be informed. You don't have to wait to September 2nd to go to a meeting, when she should have known this information immediately. This is the kind of information that you should get right away. They are completely changing the system. Other towns have done this too, because they realize that other people who were used to be in the city did all these deals with developers, and they gave them all these special items, and we had to pay for all that. So that's the deal with the special assessment, she was 100% correct, there were misrepresentations about two units, but if you notice, those units go up by square footage. So obviously, the warehouse of Amazon is going to have a much larger square footage than you, and they're going to pay much more of that bill than you will.
Time. I don't think we really have time. Okay, this is for all three of you. What do you propose to do to tighten the reins on spending? Actually, it's a two-part question. What do you propose to do to tighten the reins on spending, and how do you anticipate controlling growth and having builders pay for their fair share for the infrastructure? Control spending? Mike?
Okay, so, control spending, reduce fees. We're obviously all listening, going to be infected by inflation, but I also think we have our fees and control spending based on our lack of efficiency in managing our government. And that includes not having an appropriate preventative plan maintenance system for all of our equipment, white fleet equipment and all that kind of stuff, as I understand, so that vehicles and things like that, not living up to their lifecycle expectations, cost us money. So if you fix that, then you reduce spending, because you don't have to spend as much on replacing a vehicle and equipment faster. To control spending, part of the evaluation process is going to be, are we meeting those financial goals? Let's just say the city council is able to convince, either we have a zero spending growth program, again, these things are just hypothetical in what we're going to try to do, or you set a 2%, like the military and regular government put a 3% cut mandatory, you need to cut 3%, okay? Those types of things can be used. But the big portion of the tax spending and how we hopefully reduce taxes and eliminate fees is going to be from the efficiencies, such as the Doge investigation is going to be happening, if it's not, are happening already, to identify those areas of waste that I will promise you is extravagant in the government, because it's never been evaluated. So those are some of my thoughts on how we control spending and hopefully reduce fees.
Judith?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing up Doge. The mayor decided that we should have Doge come in and look into the city, and we sent our report off on the 28th of July. It was a very cumbersome report to put together, we'd asked for a little longer extension, they said, "No, send it to us." It was in a meeting Thursday, and we'd received an email from the Doge team going, "Hey, we haven't received your report," and they're like, "Well, here it is, we sent it on the 28th." So I'm not so sure that what they're going to uncover, but maybe they can uncover why their timeliness is all screwed up and they couldn't find the report. I don't think it's as rampant as you think, Jim, but that's, I'll leave that in the parking lot. I'm not exactly sure, you said rampant spending of the city, did you say that, Keith? The question was rampant spending in the city, what was the tone of the question?
How would you control spending? Control growth, having builders pay for their fair share?
Okay, so we used to have an impact fee of about $6,500, that was doubled to 13 and change for the builders now, so our impact fees have doubled, that will help. Just one thing real quick, I got a 35-page report there on that fire assessment, sorry, I didn't point out that our commercial businesses, Kroger, et cetera, were only paying $14,000 a year in their fire assessment taxes. That's from 2022 to current. Yes, it is going to go up, I had a very lengthy meeting with one of our industry or commercial industries just the other day, and they are getting a close to $35,000 increase in their, if this passes, they would get a close to a $35,000 increase in their fire tax assessment. Look, nobody likes anything going up, but they understood it, they were glad they got the break they did for the three years that they did. So, I have a ton of information there, I get two minutes, I can't dig through the whole thing, it's, sorry that I didn't point that out, I was more concerned about your individual home. And I don't know what rampant spending we have in the city, somebody would have to give me one idea. How do we control growth? I heard somebody say, "They want to build here, they want to build there." The city isn't doing the building, ladies and gentlemen. A developer comes in and says, "This piece of property right here on Wilson Lake was sold over 20 years ago, and now the developer has decided he would like to develop it." They come into the city, they go to our planning and zoning board, and they give them all the information they want to do, streetlights will go here, fire hydrants will go there, trees, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and if it gets approved by planning and zoning, it goes to TJ Fishes Department, which is utilities and infrastructure, thank you very much.
Mike?
If you want to control spending, you put hard caps on spending. You sit there and say that the city can no longer spend this, the city has to reduce every single agency by a certain percent, and you tell every agency to go out there and come up with a budget that reduces the impact on the city. Instead, has anybody listened to the budget meetings I've had? Every single department came in and asked for more, 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 more. Nobody came in and said, "We can do it for less." And when they do have a proposal that comes in to save us money, well, you know, four or five people might have to get laid off to save us money. We can't do that, we can't do that. We can't save $680,000 a year and lay off four people, we can't do that. Those four people are our family, we can't do that. So we can never reduce money, we can never reduce spending. They want, in that government right now, to continue on the path of destruction. I told you they only take $11 million in taxes. Where's all this money coming from? Loans and grants, loans and grants run out, you have to pay the loan back sometimes. Interest on those loans are expensive. They have to have hard guidelines, and the city council has to do the hard work and set those guidelines, not the individual departments coming up with their budgets and explaining why they need this money and why it would be so much better for Groveland. I don't believe so. They need hard budgets, thank you.
Okay, this next question's for Judith. How was your vote to approve the Avalon project of benefit to the city?
I didn't approve the Avalon project, it was on the council seat and voted in long before I got there. However, I will tell you, I like the Avalon project. It will give us a better downtown, a walkable downtown. I have people say to me all the time, "Why can't we be like Winter Garden?" Well, when Avalon comes in and gets done in about six years, you might have your taste of Winter Garden with restaurants in a walkable city. I look at the pioneers, like Michelle's Tropical Ice Cream Treats, who has his ice cream business down there, and all those other little small businesses down there who bought into the idea that we would revitalize downtown. It's there, it's coming, there's been some pushback to have the contract renegotiated. Anybody here ever signed a contract and managed to get one renegotiated? Because I'm thinking that's going to be like a good meeting and probably a hard no, but that was voted on before I was on the council. I've agreed with the rest of the council, sure, let the contract be looked at, see if there's anything that could be reworked or reworded, not holding my breath on that, ladies and gentlemen, but I like the Avalon project. I lived in Northern Virginia, and I lived in Annapolis, and I lived close to projects like that, where you have retail on the bottom floor, people live above, restaurants, dry cleaners, coffee shops, smoothie shops, things that we all like and enjoy, and make it easy for us to go down and enjoy our beautiful downtown as it continues to expand and revitalize. But if that project had been shut down, I'm not so sure that those pioneers that opened their businesses down there on West Broad would be able to remain. They opened on a wing and a prayer, the downtown's going to be revitalized, it needs to be revitalized. And so I like the Avalon project.
Okay, this next question's for Jim. What is a strategic plan, and why do you think local government can't move faster? And can we in business make things happen quicker?
Is that a question or a paragraph?
I'll let you define it.
Thanks, appreciate it. Glasses, glasses. Okay. What is a strategic plan? So... A strategic plan is, whether it's an organization or a city, or a group, that lays out your vision, three, five, 10, where do we plan on going from this moment forward? And what are the tools, the resources, anything that's going to be, we're going to need to get us to that place. We have to develop a strategy and understand why we're going there, and to develop the ability to get there, that's your strategy. Built inside that strategic plan, you have your tactical requirements, which means these are the specific steps on how we get to get certain milestones to achieve that strategic plan. The plan is long-range vision, your tactical milestones and steps are your short-range goals to get there. So, does that, does that make sense from what a strategic and a tactical application is? I hope so, if not, again, why do you think local government can't move faster? It's heredity. There's not a, and faster is, again, an elusive term, because I think some of you have told this, that nothing gets done quickly because it's not in the government's best interest to move quickly. Okay? There's meetings, bureaucrats have got to stay in place, okay, departments have got to stay in place, no, and it has to go through so many layers of approval because of regulation, okay? And some of those things are good for us, some of those things are bad for us, but government will never move faster. We were talking about the Wilson Lake Parkway light, how many people believe it's coming in June? How many people, very good, see? Now you're starting to think like a Democrat. Can't happen.
Okay, there's one last question that I'm going to read, and I'm going to take it, because it has to do with voter registration, and I work as an election officer right here in Precinct 135. Question is, how many registered voters are in District Four? Just a little under 4,000, I think 3,900 now, something like that. 50% of the registered voters for District Four live right here in Trilogy. We have a great impact on the vote within District Four, okay? So, that's the answer to that. Now, with that, I'll give each of them two minutes to wrap up, why you're running, why everybody here should vote for you, so Judith, you're up.
Thank you. The light on Wilson Lake Parkway has now been pushed off till June, I mean, to September. Let me make one thing really clear about that light, the city has no control over it. It's Lake County, Florida Department of Transportation, and Duke Energy, and until Duke moves the overhead lights, the rest of it's not going to fall in place. I'm as frustrated about it as you are, but it's coming. I wanted it done before school. Look, I have been representing you since October, District Four and all of Groveland, because everything that we touch touches all of Groveland. I will continue to do what I do well, and that is represent you, and I think I've pointed out today some of the things you probably didn't know, like my interaction with Trilogy to save you money, your $170,000 insurance that you didn't know you got saved. You can thank your HOA for that, but if I hadn't given them the information, that would have come out of our pockets. The tree issue. I work with communities across the street from us that have issues in their communities, and we set up meetings, and we help them with some of the things that are impacting their HOA. I work with the small retail that we have right up here, to encourage them to look at these new shops that are going to open, it'll be two years down the road, maybe longer, and trying to encourage other retailers to come in and fill those empty slots up there. I would love that to be a robust shopping center. So, I continue to do this, I, just the other night, something came up, and I had, I don't know, I was up till 3:00 in the morning, making notes, talking to my phone, call this person, call that person, call the other, and I started a snowball rolling on a project that will help our...
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mike?
I've been getting trumped all night, every time she comes up, she stands in front of me, I don't know why. But what I want to get accomplished is I want to get fiscal responsibility accomplished when I get in there. I want to have technical oversight of projects when I get in there, and, you know, it was talking about the Avalon project... And, you know, it was talking about the Avalon project, did you know that they gave, the owner gave us a train station? And the owner wrote in the contract of the train station that we have until the owner puts up the first building, whatever that building might be, to renovate that train station, so historical train station. If we don't get that done, he takes it back and bulldozes it. That's what we need technical oversight for, and that's what I want to bring to Groveland. I want to bring technical oversight. Now, as councilmen, you should have read the contract that you were voting for, and you should have said, "No." They gave 50% discount to the developer in taxes. Those taxes weren't our taxes, they weren't Groveland taxes. They were state taxes, they were Lake County taxes. Do you know who has to pay those taxes? You do. He's putting up a building, he's making money, he's renting apartments to people, and you're paying his taxes. And he gave you an historic train station that there's no way in the world that's ever going to get fixed before they put up their first building, because we can't touch it until they start building. And they're better at building than we are. They are so much better at building than we are. So we're going to lose the train station, we're not even going to have that. What else does that project give us? It's going to give us 500 apartments, right down there on downtown Groveland, instead of retail. We could have put retail there, but now we're going to have 500 apartments there. I don't believe that's fiscal responsible. I don't believe there's any technical oversight on there. I don't believe that they know what they were voting on. And that's why the mayor is bringing it back. And he's getting resistance for bringing it back, but he should bring it back because it was wrong. And they can do right where they did wrong. There is no prohibition on going back and looking at anything.
Time? Thank you. Okay, Jim? Time? Okay, thank you. All right, this wraps it up. Thank you all very much for coming. If you notice, there's a camera crew back here from South Lake TV that has recorded all of this. Okay? I'll post the link to it, so that you can let your friends know, those that weren't lucky enough to be here, that they can watch it and see what went on, and listen to the questions. So thank you again. Would you please put your chairs back against the tables, and make sure you pick up all of your papers when you leave?